The 11th edition of the Board of Supervisors, welcome. Roberta, will you please call the meeting order? Or, call the roll? I'll call the meeting order.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Long? Supervisor Michaels?
Here.
Supervisor Flynn?
Here.
Supervisor Parks?
Here. And Supervisor Long is not here this week. Our next item on the agenda is a moment of affirmation, and we don't have someone here today to give us a moment of affirmation, but I do have something I'd like to mention. Yesterday, I was fortunate to go through a class that the county requires actually all our managers and supervisors to attend on discrimination, and getting a good understanding and sensitivity of the importance it is to respect each other and our fellow employees. And I note that today, April 11, 1968, is the anniversary of the Civil Rights Act. And exactly one week after the assassination of Martin Luther King Jr., the Civil Rights Act of 1968 was adopted. It protects civil rights workers, expanding the rights of Native Americans, and providing anti-discrimination measures in housing. And it was signed into law by President Lyndon B. Johnson, who said, "The proudest moments of my presidency have been times such as this, when I have signed into law the promises of a century." And we just really realize how far we have come, how far we have to go. I would like very much to, at this time, have everyone join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand. My hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a motion to adopt the minutes and a second. We see no objection, the minutes pass. And we'll move now on to our agenda review. Mr. Johnson?
Madam Chair, members of the board, there is one modification to your agenda. The last item, number 23, is requesting that be continued for a week to allow the Purchasing Office further time for review.
Okay, so item 23 is requested for continuance. Are there any other requests from the board? Okay, with that, a motion to accept the agenda as revised.
Second.
Motion and a second, no objection, then the agenda is approved as revised. We'll now move on to item seven, which is the consent agenda items, 10 through 17. I do have a question on one of the items, and I don't know if someone from Watershed Protection District is here. I tried contacting them late yesterday. But I would request that we hold off on the emergency contract authority, I think it's item 16. So just to pull that to a little bit later in the meeting for a question to Mr. Vargas. So with that, unless there's any other questions, I'd ask approval of the consent agenda minus 16.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and seeing no objection, that passes, and we will do a 16 after some question. Our next item on our agenda is public comments, so we'll go to those now. Our first speaker is John Hazelty. Good morning, Mr. Hazelty.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Supervisors. My name is John Hazelty, I'm 7250 Wolverines Street, Ventura. And I'm here talking about the LNG review and that the EIR that's taking place by the Public Lands Commission, and it'll be in Auction Art at the Performing Arts Center. This starts at 1 to 4, and that's for public comments, and also from 6:30 to 9:30, which might probably extend further than that. And the public is invited to come to make their wishes known or their comments known. They'll have a free now speaking period, and also if they would like to make a written comment, that would be appreciated to be provided to the Lands Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hazelty. Our next public comment card is Lou Matthews. Good morning, Ms. Matthews.
Good morning. Members of the board, Mr. Johnson and others. My name is Lou Matthews, and I live in Ventura. And as most of you know, I serve on several committees and boards related to mental health issues, but I'm here today speaking on behalf of myself, as a citizen and a family member with a son who has schizophrenia. It has recently come to my attention that the two-story building, mental health building at 300 Hillmont, is slated for demolition. This is extravagantly wasteful of a resource that is desperately needed. This building is the main part of a complex that was built with federal dollars to take people coming from state hospitals. It opened around 1969 to 70, and as buildings go, it's not that old. Most residents who live in the area live in buildings that are older, some much older. Any engineer worth his salt can find reasons to destroy a building, but it's not convincing that bringing this building up to code is too expensive, and it will be costly to demolish it. I do understand that the county has many other unmet needs. One example is the family clinic located in Modulators, and it deserves better space. But the hospital compound has a plentiful amount of open space on which to build, and there are Unfortunately, my letter was not considered nor even included in the final investigation report. For this reason, I want to read it now to be sure that the letter is part of the county records and it will be considered in future. To whom concern? A member of Ventura County Harbor Commission, a representative supervisor Linda Parks District Two. I want to clarify a few issues which happened during the Harbor Commission meeting on September 7, 2005. I address during this meeting various issues with current management problems related to program leases, needs for a complex update of Department Public Works harbor plan, and other issues. During my discussion, unfortunately, I was well by attack, not the first time, by the Commissioner Sally Brewer. She clearly stated that I'm wasting her time and other commissioners, that she does not understand me because of my accent, and that I should submit my comments in writing. Secondly, I was embarrassed by her comments, especially because I'm able to efficiently communicate and manage large multimillion projects for Los Angeles County as GIs manager for Department of Regional Planning. I was not able to defend myself due to this embarrassment. Because the chairman of the Harbor Commission didn't make any attempt to stop Mrs. Brewer's comments, a former commissioner, Mr. Evans Hughes, as the chairman for fraud. He defended me and my rights for free speech during the hour meeting and asked Mrs. Brewer to stop such hostile remarks toward me or to leave meeting if she would continue such hostility toward me. Having occurred to read her complaint letter to Supervisor Kathy Long, I want to clearly state that Mr. Hughes did not well by assault the harbor director, Mrs. Krieger, or call her a liar anytime during commission meetings. I'm shocked by such verbal attacks and the letter sent by Mrs. Brewer, especially when open discussion is absolutely necessary to address very complicated issues related to growing legal and financial obstacles with the Channel Islands harbors exposed. In conclusion, I want to stress my deep interest to work in this commission to better the best recommendation for the board of supervisors, which will lead the harbor out from current serious problems. Milan Svetek, member of American Institute of Certified Planner, January 29, 2006. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Svetek. And we did receive your letter and a packet of information regarding the issue at hand. And also, Mr. Johnson has indicated that if you want to look through the files, he's got a full, complete set, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Francis Chacon. Sounds French. Good morning, Ms. Chacon.
Well, good morning, Supervisors. I want to give you a little history about myself before I speak about the Channel Islands. As you said, Chacon, my name is Francis Chacon. I was born and raised in Ventura County. I have been a resident of Al Rio for 44 years. I was appointed to the Rio School District in 1981 and elected to office in 1983, the same district. In 1987, I won my second election unopposed. I was the first female Latina to hold office in this school district since its inception. I have been involved in my community, my job, I'm now retired, and in my church. I have been recognized by Naleo, which is the National Association of Latinos, elected officials. I made the issue of Who's One America and have received awards for my community involvements. So that will tell you where I'm coming from. Now, I'm here today to speak to you about the Channel Islands harbor. This beautiful harbor has become a political fiasco. This harbor is for the use of the people. It's not to, it does not belong to the harbor director, nor to the businesses who, of course, profit from it, nor to the politicians. We, Mr. Flynn's constituents, have asked him to transform this harbor. This harbor is in his district, so why is it that you as a board cannot work cohesively with him and resolve your issues? Your recent actions against Mr. Flynn is an attempt to suppress him, and I have known Mr. Flynn for many years and known that you can't suppress Mr. Flynn. He's a fighter. He is honest, loyal, and dedicated to his constituents. This is what has kept him in office all these years. He stands up for what he believes, and he will fight for it. An editorial in the Ventura County Star on Monday, yesterday, Mr., I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Michaels said, "It's time for the truth to be known." And as a taxpayer, I say to you, it's time to untie his hands and let Mr. Flynn do his job, and his staff, of course. Also, your actions are also trying to suppress Evans Hughes. This highly respected harbor commissioner is not a rubber stamp for anyone. He is an intelligent, successful businessman who is a asset to the Harbor Commission, and instead of trumping up falsehoods against him, utilize his intelligence to revive this failing Channel Islands harbor, where it will be more profitable in revenues, make this harbor inviting for people of all walks, rich and poor. Remember, your actions will have a long-lasting effect to the harbor, to the community for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chacon. Our next speaker is Albert Egert, followed by Carol D. Williams.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and the board of supervisors.
Good morning, Mr. Egert.
I'm going to complete the reading on my fundamental inadmissible right to own private property into the record for preservation. What is enormously puzzling about the aforementioned is that I have provided a plethora of legal documentation and information to show proof positive that I am not a U.S. 14th Amendment federal citizen, and I have provided all said documents to Dan Goodwin, his office and legal defense counsel, Linda Ash, and many other government agencies, local, state, and federal, in written English format, including copies of my California State citizenship documents, which each of the three citizenship documents legally recorded in Ventura County. Up to date, Dan Goodwin, his office and defense counsel, Linda Ash, have entirely ignored all of this information and have elected instead to conspire against me and my property by prosecution of an unfounded claim that lacks any plausible due process, stating myself and my property fall under the State of California 1879 Constitution, and therefore I and my property are to be regulated and taxed accordingly in regards to their unfounded and unsupported opinion. Again, for the record, with a demand for written response from this board and its publicly elected members in regards to the foregoing question. Where is the lawful authority for the county and state to diminish my inadmissible right to own private property in the capacity of a common law citizen and thus take said right and convert it to a privilege so my private property can be regulated and taxed and my right diminished? You know, I want the answer to this question with full disclosure, and I demand it within 10 days, formally and writing, from this publicly elected board. Therefore, it is my diligence and civic duty as a California State citizen, now that this publicly elected board has been informed and apprised to the aforementioned issue and burning question addressing the right to own private property, and plainly because you board members are publicly elected officials and have sworn an oath or affirmation to protect and defend the Constitution, I now respectfully ask for copies of your sworn oath or affirmation and your charity bond from every publicly elected member of this board. Why? Because if you choose to side with Dan Goodwin, his office and legal defense counsel, Linda Ash, in their conspiracy and illegal actions, I will elect to make each of you members of this publicly elected board my charity and bond. Respectfully submitted, April 4, 2006, Albert, Alfred Egert, a California State citizen and part of the body politic, we the people, for the people, of the people. P. C. to Dan Goodwin, Ventura County Assessor, Linda Ash, legal defense counsel for Dan Goodwin, Ventura County Board of Supervisors, Greg Taunton, Ventura County District Attorney. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Egert, followed by Mr. Carol D. Williams.
Good morning, Carol D. Williams, 60-year resident of Ventura County. Chairman, Chairwoman Parks, do you have my definitions of profanity?
Will you be being profane this morning? Are you going to give us some profanity? That will be the assistance, because we want to make sure.
I don't have any definitions.
We want to make sure the profanity doesn't get on our television and being seen by children.
I hope you're not clocking that against my time.
Please go forward. You're not going to give us.
If you're here, she's clocking that against my time.
You've got your full five minutes. I just wanted to know in advance if we're going to need to cut you off because of the language.
Well, okay, since your rudeness, your rudeness here, and I stopped by the county council's office, he's supposed to have a contract for me to sign to sue you over your order and conduct of business. They clap at the 9:30. See the green? Supervisor Parks handed me this, and she campaigned for open government. See the green? There's no clapping. But at 9:30, the board initiates the clapping. So I'll have to see if you determine that this is profanity. Fingers tickle. Look at Roberta's hand. Fingers tickle. Ask. Oh, she turned it out.
That completes our public comments. Ms. Michaels, would you like to go first?
Thank you. I have no other comments than to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Michaels. Mr. Bennett, would you like to go next?
Yeah, I'd like to ask people to adjourn in memory of the people on the list, and my apologies for being late this morning, fighting a stomach bug. I'll hang as long as I can.
Hang in there with Mr. Bennett. Supervisor Flynn, would you like to have your board comment now?
Do I have any choice?
You can wait till next week.
I'd ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people I have on this list and present it to the county, to the board.
Thank you. I also have a list of adjournments, and on behalf of Supervisor Long, she has asked that I adjourn in memory for someone who lived in the 3rd District and was a Ventura County paramedic firefighter, and his name is Pa Vu Buola, and he was born in 1968 and he died this month. Phil has been with the fire district for four and a half years. He was stationed at our Fillmore Fire Station, number 27. He's a great father who gave back to the community through his paramedic skills, and as I understand it, he has two young children, and his wife is also expecting their third child. His wife, Alyssa, is expecting her third child. Although many patients never knew his name, they knew a caring and compassionate firefighter was there to help them. The county has lost a very valuable and irreplaceable asset, and our whole county is saddened by his untimely death. So with that, we'll adjourn in memory of Phil. Our next agenda item, then, yes?
I'd like to, I would like to, but I need to announce that the item for the Coastal Commission tomorrow, not tomorrow, I guess Thursday, a request has been submitted for a continuance. Our harbor director, Lynn Krieger's mother has passed away. The funeral is tomorrow, and she's out of state. So I just wanted everyone to be aware of that in case you were planning to attend the Coastal Commission, this item will be continued.
Thank you for that, and I had meant to announce that also. I know residents were very interested to know whether it was going to be continued. Hopefully, that will come to be, because that is the county's request. Thank you. So now we'll move on to our regular agenda, and that will get us to item, let's see. It's going. That completes our public comments. Ms. Michaels, would you like to go first?
Thank you. I have no other comments than to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Michaels. Mr. Bennett, would you like to go next?
Yeah, I'd like to ask people to adjourn in memory of the people on the list, and my apologies for being late this morning, fighting a stomach bug. I'll hang as long as I can.
Hang in there with Mr. Bennett. Supervisor Flynn, would you like to have your board comment now?
Do I have any choice?
You can wait till next week.
I'd ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people I have on this list and present it to the county, to the clerk of the board.
Thank you. I also have a list of adjournments, and on behalf of Supervisor Long, she has asked that I adjourn in memory for someone who lived in the Third District and was a Ventura County paramedic firefighter. And his name is Pa'vu Buola, and he was born in 1968, and he died this month. Phil has been with the fire district for four and a half years. He was stationed at our Fillmore Fire Station, number twenty-seven. He's a great father who gave back to the community through his paramedic skills, and as I understand it, he has two young children, and his wife is also expecting their third child. His wife, Alyssa, is expecting her third child. Although many patients never knew his name, they knew a caring and compassionate firefighter was there to help them. The county has lost a very valuable and irreplaceable asset, and our whole county is saddened by his untimely death. So with that, we'll adjourn in memory of Phil. Our next agenda item then, yes?
I want to announce one comment. I'd like to, would like to, but I need to announce that the item for the Coastal Commission tomorrow, not tomorrow, I guess Thursday, has a request has been submitted for a continuance. Our harbor director, Lynn Krieger, his mother has passed away. The funeral is tomorrow, and she's out of state. So I just wanted everyone to be aware of that in case you were planning to attend the Coastal Commission, this item will be continued.
Thank you for that, and I had meant to announce that also. I know residents were very interested to know whether it was going to be continued. Hopefully, that will come to be, because that is the county's request. Thank you. So now we'll move on to our regular agenda, and that will get us to item, let's see. It's going to be a quick meeting, twenty-one, is that right, the Harbor Department then?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Ladies and the board, Mr. Johnson. I'm Carol LaBella with the Harbor Department. This item is requesting your approval of three recommendations, the first being the substitution of a new lender, Wakovia Financial Services. This is for parcel F3, which is going to be the New Hampton Inn. It's the, what we have called in the past, the Casa Serena extension. Also, to ask you to authorize the Director of the Harbor Department to process the loan documents, to sign them on behalf of the county, and finally, to authorize the Chair of the Board to execute a memorandum of extended lease upon verification by the Director of the Harbor Department and verified by the CEO and County Council that all of the preconditions for this lease extension have been met. Again, this is for parcel F3 only. Any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Flynn?
Yes, thank you. What is the purpose of this change?
I believe that this is giving them the financing that they need to complete the renovations of the Hampton Inn.
Okay. I thought they had had the money beforehand.
Mr. Wes Fuller is right here, and he can maybe expand on my answer.
That's right. The financing is for the renovation of the hotel, so it's a construction financing.
So it's not a refinancing?
Well, in a sense, it is a refinance, because the acquisition loan that was placed on the portfolio when it was purchased has been refinanced as the projects come to their life, which is going to be the New Hampton Inn. Now, obviously, the bank would like for us to refinance this portion of our portfolio for the construction of the Hampton Inn.
So this is the same lender, then?
I'm sorry?
Same lender?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Here's a point I would like to make about one of the words that's used, and it's on page, let's see, page two. It's A. under the first full paragraph, and it uses the word renovation. And several words have been used for what's going to happen: renovation, tear down, rebuild. And I presume they all have different meanings. So what word are we settled on now?
Well, I think renovation is a good word to use. This is only for the Casa Serena extension, what we've called the extension, and not the main hotel. The main hotel may be torn down. This extension will only be significantly remodeled, so renovation is probably an accurate word to use.
So it's simply on this one issue?
On that one issue.
So on the other, though, we have to become clear on what word is, what is going to be done. I'm still not quite clear on it.
I understand your concern.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No approval.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, and I know that the lease really requires the consent of the county here, as we have already agreed, so this is just following along. Are there any objections to the motion? Just a wave, but not an objection. Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and good luck. We look forward to coming to the ribbon cutting. All right, our next agenda item then is item twenty-two. This is from the Healthcare Agency and our Public Health Officer, Dr. Levin. Hi.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnson, in 2000, your board adopted a resolution declaring a local emergency and authorizing the establishment of a controlled syringe replacement program. Thank you for your support of that program of the Public Health Department and of the Healthcare Agency. The success of that program belongs almost entirely to a community-based organization, the Rainbow Alliance, which has provided consistent volunteers and supplies. There are two successes of the program that are on my mind this morning. One is the many referrals and tests that have been performed by this program, which have led people to safer and more productive lives. And another is the fact that in 1996, sixteen percent of AIDS cases in our county were attributable to IV drug use, and in 2005, there were no such cases. Also, in 2005, Assembly Bill 547 eliminated the requirement that your board re-declare at regular intervals a local state of emergency to allow for a syringe replacement program. The local health department, only requirement now is to update your board. I ask that you receive and file this update.
We have a motion and a second, and I would just note that the Assembly Bill 547, a state bill that we referenced, it also requires that services include treatment services, and that is where my, and I would imagine the whole board's emphasis really has to be put, is to make sure that we have treatment and prevention of addiction to begin with. I appreciate it, and we have no objection, and then the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And that is good news.
Excuse me?
That is good news, that there were no IV-related HIV cases this year, last year. It's an incredible change.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I believe that concludes the regular agenda portion of our meeting, and, oh, we, good, thank you. There was something left over from our consent calendar, and that was regarding the emergency service contracts that we have. I brought this one up for questions, so what I was looking at is, this is item sixteen, and it refers to two projects that we're continuing as emergency contract, on emergency contract basis. And the question I have on both of these projects, the Watershed Protection District did solicit competitive bids and chose the lowest bidder. And I know that part of the reason of this renewal of the emergency contract authority is so you don't, you can go faster and not have to go through a full-fledged bid process. And one of these projects is just a change order of one of the contracts that was let through the bid process, and I'm just wondering the necessity of continuing the emergency contract authority in such case.
If we should continue? Yes, I believe we should.
Could you explain why we need to, since we are going through the process of competitive bids, and this is a change order on a process, on one of those bids?
The change order put in place a protection so that before we got the rock rip, first on the airport project, there we have to face the slope with rock to protect it. The storms brought about a situation where there was, in advance of when we had the rock, it was starting to damage the slope protection once again, so we had to put in a groin area or a protection of rock out into the river to divert the water so that it would not damage the slope before we had a chance to put the rock protection on it.
And I don't question the need for either of these projects, and understand, you know, why they are being done, but my question just is in this use of the emergency contract authority. And to me, that, the basis for that is so you don't need to go to competitive bid, yet we have anyway, and now we're just continuing those contracts. And I'm just, you know, would like, maybe you could get it to me in report form, but a better understanding as to why we need to continue the emergency authority on projects that we've already gone to bid on. So I'm not fully clear on that.
I'll be glad to do.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Didn't mean to put you on the spot on it, but I would like to have that.
No, that's okay, but I can put it in a report or answer any question.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion then?
Second.
A motion and a second. Seeing no objection, that passes, and it's one of those unusual things. I'm just trying to figure out, why are we having that, continuing the emergency authority? All right, with that, then, we will have about fifteen minutes before we go to our time certain items. Will that be sufficient time to do something in closed session, Mr. Quayvon? Okay, so we'll go to closed session and be back for our nine-thirty time certain. Thank you.
It is our nine thirty time certain item, and that first item is our proclamation of Victims' Rights Week. And this is a resolution from the Board of Supervisors. I see, hello Ms. Murphy, we have also Mr. Cotton here. This is a proclamation that reads, "Whereas victims of crime across America need and deserve support and assistance to help them cope with the consequences of crime, and whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week offers the opportunity to promote helping victims and survivors of crime and recognizes their rights as victims, and whereas victims and survivors of crime can gain strength from the wide range of supportive services offered by the community and justice programs, and whereas Ventura County has demonstrated its caring and compassion for victims of crime from individuals who provide support to victims in need, to community collaborations that result in comprehensive services for crime victims, and whereas we must remain united in our commitment to ensure that all crime victims and survivors are treated with compassion and respect, recognized as key participants within our systems of justice, and afforded services that provide help and hope to them, and whereas the District Attorney's L.A. Liston Crime Victims Assistance Program is joining forces with victim service programs, criminal justice officials, and concerned citizens throughout Ventura County in America to observe National Crime Victims Rights Week, now therefore be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim April twenty-third to twenty-ninth as Crime Rights Week, which is not this week, but I think next week, in the county of Ventura, and honors crime victims and those who serve them during this week and throughout the year. And I'll come down and present this to you. I also wanted to mention, and you may be mentioning this, is that this Monday, April twenty-fourth, at eleven-thirty a.m. to one p.m. at our county government center here in the courtyard, we have a ceremony promoting the awareness of victims. So let me come on down there, and if you'd like to speak, we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Johnson, Crime Victims Rights Week is a time honored tradition in Ventura County. It's a time when we join together to recognize the devastating impact of crime and dedicate ourselves once again to helping the crime victims and survivors. Crime victim assistance programs in our county do the one thing, help the victim do the one thing they think they cannot do, which is to survive and to recover. And we have here today a number of service providers in our county, and I'd like to take a minute and introduce them. The Coalition to End Domestic Violence is here, Janet. The Area Agency on Aging, Monica. Kathy Young from Adult Protective Services. We have a number of staff here today from Interface Children Family Services, and of course, the Victim Advocate Staff from the District Attorney's Crime Victim Assistance Program, including some of our volunteers. Susan Becker, who is the Program Director for our Safe Harbor Program, and of course, the District Attorney, Greg Todd, and his chief, Mr. Gary Hour.
Well, thank you so much, and really appreciate your commitment, and then also just to encourage people to get involved, volunteer. And you have a wonderful program. You bring in volunteers, and there's probably nothing better that you can do than to help someone so desperately in need. So just thank you for what you do, and we'll be there next week.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. See you next week, I hope. Thank you.
Our District Attorneys here, would you like to make some comments for us, too?
I was here on your second time certain matter, but I'm honored and privileged. You really are looking at people who are on the front lines of helping crime victims. They deal with the women and children and other members of our community that suffer terrible trauma and injury at the hands of criminals. They deal with them at a time of crisis in their lives, at a time when they are at their worst, and they do it with great compassion and great passion for their work, and they truly do make a difference in our community.
The collaboration, you know, and it affects everyone of all ages, and we see it from Interface that deals with children all the way up to our Area Agency on Aging, too. We do have a comment card on this item. So, Mr. Carol Dean Williams, if you'd like to come up, you have about another minute left in your comments.
Carol Dean Williams, sixty-year resident of Ventura, how much time do I have? Well, the word-
It is our nine thirty time certain item. And that first item is our proclamation of Victims Rights Week. And this is a resolution from the Board of Supervisors. I see, hello, Ms. Murphy. We have also Mr. Cotton here. This is a proclamation that reads, "Whereas victims of crime across America need and deserve support and assistance to help them cope with the consequences of crime, and whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week offers the opportunity to promote helping victims and survivors of crime and recognizes their rights as victims, and whereas victims and survivors of crime can gain strength from the wide range of supportive services offered by the community and justice programs, and whereas Ventura County has demonstrated its caring and compassion for victims of crime from individuals who provide support to victims in need to community collaborations that result in comprehensive services for crime victims, and whereas we must remain united in our commitment to ensure that all crime victims and survivors are treated with compassion and respect, recognized as key participants within our systems of justice, and afforded services that provide help and hope to them, and whereas the District Attorney's L.A. List and Crime Victims Assistance Program is joining forces with victim service programs, criminal justice officials, and concerned citizens throughout Ventura County in America to observe National Crime Victims Rights Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim April 23rd to 29th as Crime Rights Week, which is not this week, but I think next week, in the county of Ventura, and honors crime victims and those who serve them during this week and throughout the year. And I'll come down and present this to you. I also wanted to mention, and you may be mentioning this, is that this Monday, April 24th, at 11:30 a.m. to 1 p.m. at our county government center here in the courtyard, we have a ceremony promoting the awareness of victims. So let me come on down there, and if you'd like to speak, we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Johnson. Crime Victims Rights Week is a time honored tradition in Ventura County. It's a time when we join together to recognize the devastating impact of crime and dedicate ourselves once again to helping the crime victims and survivors. Crime victim assistance programs in our county do the one thing, help the victim do the one thing they think they cannot do, which is to survive and to recover. And we have here today a number of service providers in our county, and I'd like to take a minute and introduce them. The Coalition to End Domestic Violence is here, Jan. The Area Agency on Aging, Monica. Kathy Young from Adult Protective Services. We have a number of staff here today from Interface Children Family Services. And of course, the Victim Advocate staff from the District Attorney's Crime Victim Assistance Program, including some of our volunteers. Susan Becker, who is the Program Director for our Safe Harbor program. And of course, the District Attorney, Greg Totten, and his chief, Mr. Gary Hour.
Well, thank you so much, and really appreciate your commitment, and then also just to encourage people to get involved, volunteer. And you have a wonderful program. You bring in volunteers, and there's probably nothing better that you can do than to help someone so desperately in need. So just thank you for what you do, and we'll be there next week.
Okay, thank you, thank you. See you next week, I hope. Thank you.
Our District Attorneys here, would you like to make some comments for us, too?
I was here on your second time certain matter, but I'm honored and privileged. You really are looking at people who are on the front lines of helping crime victims. They deal with the women and children and other members of our community that suffer terrible trauma and injury at the hands of criminals. They deal with them at a time of crisis in their lives, at a time when they are at their worst, and they do it with great compassion and great passion for their work, and they truly do make a difference in our community.
The collaboration, you know, and it affects everyone of all ages, and we see it from Interface that deals with children all the way up to our Area Agency on Aging, too. We do have a comment card on this item.
Oh, okay.
So, Mr. Carol Dean Williams, if you'd like to come up, you have about another minute left in your comments.
Carol Dean Williams, sixty-year resident of Ventura, how much time do I have? Well, the word victim comes from "to sacrifice," the origin of it. And Linda Parks has sacrificed her District Two voters. I should say liar, Linda Parks. On March 13th, Linda Parks said, quote, quote, "There are no laws that say candidates must tell the truth to voters," unquote. That's what Linda Parks said. There are no laws that says candidates must tell the truth to voters, March 13th. The voters of District Two are a victim of candidate Linda Parks. She goes on to say on May 15th, another lie, proven lie, quote, "Yet the fact remains that they," Brooks and Cotton, or they, "are proceeding to sue the Board of Supervisors, and the Board of Supervisors is required to pay their legal bills to sue us," unquote. I have the court order from Judge Clark that says the Board of Supervisors is not N.O.T., not ordered to pay attorney fees. Liar, Linda Parks. You are a liar. You have made District Two victims. You have sacrificed them.
I wish it were a law that we had to tell the truth and all candidates spoke the truth, but there isn't such a law, and so what we have to do on our own is make sure we tell the truth. I will move on to our next item, then. It's item number nineteenth, and this is our Safe Harbor of Ventura County. Supervisor Michaels, would you bring this one to the Board?
Yes, I did. It basically is asking for support of SB 1761 by Patigian, and it will provide to our MDICs a more stable source of funding. The two centers, one in East County and one in West County, have had to rely partially on grants, et cetera, which I'm sure they will still continue to go after so that they can do even more work. But the bill provides for funding for the Victim Witness Assistance Fund, and basically this one says that there doesn't have to be a criminal arrested. Now, I'm not sure what all that means, because I'm not sure of the ins and outs of the existing law, pardon me, but the MDICs provide for a very safe and non-threatening, as non-threatening as it can be, situation for children and women who are victims of sexual abuse, and it allows for the forensic interviewer to ask the questions, and all the other parties can be there, so it's one interview. And it's in a place, a setting, that is much nicer for the victim than it has been in the past. It's not in the back of a black and white, and it's not in an emergency room in some hospital, wide open to the public, pardon me, and it allows for the different agencies and nonprofits that work with the victims to be there, including the victim's family and their clergy if necessary. They're just such marvelous centers, and this is going to help stabilize the funding for our two. And so I'm asking the Board to authorize the Chair to send a letter to the Senator in support of his bill. And that's about it, and I'm sure Mr. Cotton could add a lot more.
Thank you for being here again, and if you'd like to comment, we appreciate it.
Happy to. Madam Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Johnson, first of all, I want to thank Supervisor Michaels for bringing this important proposal before you today. I am co-sponsoring the legislation along with the California District Attorneys Association, and it really, in addition to doing the things that Supervisor Michaels mentioned, it has another component to it that we think is very important as well, and let me speak briefly to that. Historically, victim services programs, like the one administered in the District Attorney's Office here in Ventura County, have been funded through grants that are administered by the state. They may be federal pass-through funds or state funds, but historically, we have relied upon grant funding for those programs. And what has happened, like so many programs that depend upon grants, over the last decade, really, there has been decline in grant funding, both in terms of hard dollars, as well as, while costs have increased for salaries and benefits and other services, the grants have not kept pace. And so, as Supervisor Michael's letter points out, we've suffered about a 33% or a 32% decline in staffing in our Victim Services Division. At the same time as that trend has occurred, we have also seen that the public rightfully, and crime victims specifically, are expecting more services from a pure quantity standpoint and more sophisticated and compassionate services from a quality standpoint. So the demands that are being placed upon the people that are before you today have just grown in a very significant and exponential way. What SB 1761 does is a couple of key things to address this problem. First of all, I want to thank our Victim Services Director, Catherine Dugan, because she really, this is her brainchild from the standpoint of seeing what was occurring in state law. There is a penalty assessment fund on the books. Every defendant who's prosecuted in criminal court, whether it's for an infraction or a more serious offense, pays a penalty fee. And that penalty fee is a pot of money that is allocated for a variety of different programs at the state level. One of the programs that has historically been identified in that fund is driver's training. Well, we don't have driver's trainings programs in the state of California anymore, and yet to the tune of in excess of $20 million was being allocated for that purpose by this penalty assessment fund, and it was just going into the state's general fund for whatever purpose they deemed appropriate. And so what we have tried to do by drafting a changed allocation has accomplished two purposes. First of all, provide a steady and stable stream of funding for those safe harbors. They truly are a more compassionate, more collaborative approach. While we administer the program, we are a partner with a coalition. We're a partner with the Human Services Agency, with healthcare providers, with law enforcement agencies, and a myriad of other groups that participate in this process to better serve child victims and adult victims of rape and sexual assault. And so it is a more compassionate, more effective way of dealing with those victims, but we haven't had a stable funding stream for it, and so we've had to be very careful in how we go about funding those programs. Consequently, if we can get this legislation through statewide as a matter of policy, we would say this is the preferred approach, county by county, for funding these programs, and we would provide a certain set percentage, I think it's about four and a half percent statewide to these programs. It would be a marvelous thing for crime victims. It would be a marvelous program for all the collaborators that are involved in it. The second component of the bill, which is very important as well, is victim services. Victim services, we have changed by virtue of eliminating that DMV requirement, which was not being used for that purpose, the driver's training programs, we have increased the allocation that would go to victim services. So that means there would be a new source of funding for victim services, again, across the state, recognizing what a vital program it is. So it's very good legislation. That's why we have so aggressively pursued it. The coalition of people that are supporting it includes a broad array of law enforcement, crime victims organizations, nonprofits, virtually every sheriff, every district attorney, countless police chiefs, all of the various associations, labor groups, I think even the welfare workers and human services workers are supporting it. So we are optimistic that for the first time, we have a chance in getting something significant through that will really change the face of funding for victim services, and I would be deeply grateful if this Board would adopt a resolution approving it and supporting it.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on this? I do have a speaker card.
Okay, well, I just had more of a question, because, you know, I don't deal with the operations on an in and out on a daily basis, but the percentages that they're proposing here for the Victim Witness Assistance Fund is, they're proposing to go to 14.4, Child Advocacy Centers, 4.97, and Victim Trauma Recovery Program, 2, and there was nothing. Now, are these, can you cobble these funds together, or are they stove piped so that each of those things are separate in and of themselves with different requirements?
If you had, if you have a combined program that meets criteria in each one of, in several of the classifications, you could cobble them together. Just to give you a dollar figure, the difference-
Because that's almost 21%.
Yes. We're talking significant funding that's desperately needed, just in the area of victim services, the Victim Witness Assistance Fund, the 8.64% to 14.4% translates from going to a little under $14 million to more than $23 million, and those are dollars that we can, we can use statewide, really, for this program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I want to apologize to Ms. Dugan, I think I called you Ms. Murphy. I was thinking about Patricia Murphy, who just hasn't been made into a judge. You're not a judge yet, I don't think.
I know.
We do have one speaker card who has, how many seconds left?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two seconds. Carol Dean Williams?
Carol Dean Williams, I heard Judy Michael say, if she could clarify, that the criminal need not be arrested. And I heard Mr. Cotton say that the penalty is a fee paid from a person convicted, even as an infraction. So if you could clarify, she's shaking her head no, if I didn't misunderstand you-
I misspoke. If you, and I'm sure you have it somewhere, in the board letter, it says that funds appropriated from the Assistance Fund are made available to any public or private nonprofit agency that provides comprehensive services to victims and witnesses of all types of crime, and that do not restrict services to victims of crime where there is a suspect in the case. That was the point I was trying to make, but I stumbled all over and didn't say it correctly. That's the right wording.
I can answer the question before the argument.
If you're already up, please, feel free.
Let me say you just made us day.
In the area of crime, many crimes go unsolved. For a variety of reasons, we're not able to apprehend the perpetrator or convict the perpetrator. As our public policymakers in Sacramento have long recognized that the fact that a crime goes unsolved doesn't mean that a victim shouldn't get services. So for example, somebody who's suffered a homicide, state law affords compensation for burial services, something very important for them. So that really, I think, is what Supervisor Michael's letter speaks to, and it's sound public policy, in my judgment as District Attorney, and I support it.
Thank you. And I also want to thank Supervisor Michaels for bringing this forward, too. Are there any comments or questions? Who is Supervisor Michaels?
No, I would move the recommended action.
A motion and a second, and seeing no objections, that passes. I hope this does also. Thank you very much.
And we could all send letters as individuals as well.
Thank you for your work, everyone. I believe at this time, our next time certain is 11 a.m. Is that correct?
I'm ready to speak.
Oh, I think you already spoke.
No.
You have spoke.
No, I have another five minutes, 11.
Oh, at 11 a.m. But 11 a.m. is our APCD Board meeting, and we haven't adjourned to that yet, or we will be going to that meeting. Actually, we are ready to adjourn, aren't we?
We are.
So, Mr. Williams, you have no more items to the Board of Supervisors, is that correct?
Did my timer now?
Yes.
How about the grace applies?
The Board of Supervisors is adjourned, and we'll go now to our APCD Air Pollution Control District meeting. Thank you.[1478.61]